Let Ms. Cummings lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Make sure you turn off all cell phones and, uh, this time we'd like to call Mr. Juan Sanchez. If you would please come up to the podium over here and knock everybody out of the way.
Amen. Let's pray. Dear Heavenly Father, what a beautiful opportunity you have given to us to approach your eternal grace in the name of your Son Jesus. You are the only one who makes us to succeed in every matter we bring before you because you are the only one who gives wisdom and from your mouth come knowledge and understanding. And even though sometimes we feel undecided and insecure in the process of making decisions in life, you always step in and help us to succeed once again. Oh Lord, may our decisions always be a reflection of your love, guidance, and purpose. Please, Lord, grant us the right attitude to always seek your will in all we do and say. We thank you for your blessings and for all the success that you will continue to bring into the life of the school board members and family, our teachers, students, and into the life of this beautiful county. It is in the precious name of Jesus that we pray. Amen.
Thank you so much. Okay, if you are interested in having, uh, making public comment, you would need to see Ms. Cormany or Ms. Douglas over here, Ms. Douglas, and fill out a speaker's card and she will get it up to me and we'll take them as at the order that they come in. Ms. Jorgensen just arrived, so she had called ahead of time, said she'd be right at the neck of time, so. Public comment guide, let's see, first public comment I have would be Ms. Sarah Weeks, a teacher, and Sarah, if you would come up and take your place at the podium over here.
Hi, I'm Sarah Weeks, W-E-E-K-S.
And you'll need to give your address.
Uh, 5961 White Sands Road, Keystone Heights, Florida. I teach at QI Roberts. I have been with QI since the beginning of the Cambridge program there and I'm very passionate about my work. I'm proud to work in Putnam County and I feel blessed to be a part of the Cambridge program and very optimistic about the future of QI. Um, I have, I would like to share my experience from last year and make some suggestions, if I may, relating to the district's parental leave policies. During the previous school year, I was pregnant and I needed to take parental leave. Several months before my baby's due date, I decided that I would need more time than I had previously anticipated. I was well aware of and supported the idea that my teaching assignment would likely need to change after I went out on leave. I knew that my absence could negatively impact my students and I did the legwork in finding a teacher already working at the school who could switch classes with me and replace me without the need to find a substitute or put a substitute in my tested Cambridge class. However, when I informed my principal at the time that I felt the need to take 12 weeks of FMLA leave, the response was to change my teaching assignment almost immediately despite the fact that I was the most qualified teacher and the most well-trained for the position, and I had received nothing but excellent observations in those classes. Furthermore, my principal told me that had it been known that I would be taking this much leave, I would have never been placed in the position in the first place, regardless of my being the most qualified teacher. I spent the next months attempting to minimize the stress of this early move, and at the end of my leave, I filed a grievance through the proper channels with HR. An investigation was conducted. However, the investigator concluded that they supported my reassignment prior to taking leave and found no direct evidence to support a violation of Policy 3112B, nondiscrimination and equal opportunity or access. Had I been a man who had required taking FMLA leave for medical reasons which prevented my returning to work for 12 weeks, my teaching assignment may well have needed to change after my leave began, but my assignment would never have been altered prior to my taking the leave. Instead, because I was pregnant and chose to do what was in the best interest of my students by letting my principal know well in advance of my need to take those 12 weeks of leave, I was penalized for making that choice. Besides being contrary to the spirit of laws such as FMLA and Title IX, such a practice has the potential to break down communication between employer or supervisor and employee. For example, I've heard several women voice concerns that after watching what happened to me, they would never tell their principal how much leave they were planning to take if they became pregnant until the day they were legally required to do so. In short, employees would become less willing to have open conversations with their supervisor about their leave needs for fear of negative consequences at work, and it would become more difficult for preparations to be made that would truly be in the best interest of the students of Putnam County. I'm respectfully requesting that the board consider clarifying protections for employees planning to take FMLA or parental leave who have not yet taken that leave, and perhaps consider giving employees better avenues for resolving issues related to this kind of discrimination while the problems are still in their infancy. We may be teachers and we do understand the needs of the students always come first and deeply agree with that, but we're also people who deserve the same rights to nondiscrimination in the workplace that are afforded to workers in other professions. I appreciate your time and consideration and thank you for working so hard to make Putnam County a great place to work.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Weeks. More members, if you have any no questions, I guess we'll move on. Consent agenda. Anybody have any items that they would like to pull? If you'll hang on, Ms. Crawford, I'll get where I can write them down because I know there's gonna be a lot here. Go ahead.
I'd like to pull E1 and H5.
Ms. Cummings?
No, I'm good.
Mr. Wright?
Nope.
Ms. Jorgensen?
No.
And I have none.
Ms. Chair?
Yes, sir.
A move we accept, the consent agenda minus E1 and H5.
I have a motion. I'll need a second.
Second.
I have a second from Ms. Jorgensen. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Alright, let's move to E1. Ms. Crawford?
Okay, I just, um, had a question about the two allocations we've been asked to approve for the graduation coach. I know the last time we discussed it, we were concerned about where the money was going to come from to pay them. Rhonda, what is?
Uh, these are, all three of these positions are Title I positions.
Okay.
I was requested, sent an email request to do that on a Title I fund.
Okay, so those funds that have come in since we last talked, I guess. Okay. Well then I make a motion that we approve.
Ms. Crawford?
Oh.
Those funds have not yet come in.
Oh.
We are.
Sorry.
I don't, I just don't want you to misunderstand.
Okay.
It is still under review at DOE, but it has passed through the first three or four channels, looking really good for us. So we put the request in to approve the allocations so that when we do get the money, and we anticipate that any day, that then we can go ahead and advertise and hire these positions. But I don't have the money, I don't have an award notification in hand. But so far, I've jumped all the hurdles and unless it gets stopped on Sonia Morris's desk, it should be through in the next couple of weeks.
Okay.
Okay?
They've approved it. They've approved it for other school districts, so that's why we feel confident that we're gonna get it as well, yeah.
Can we make the motion to, to maybe reiterate that, that the money wouldn't come out, it would only would come out of Title I? Or, I mean, what if the money, some crazy thing happened?
I know, I mean, you don't.
That's okay, to do that way?
We just won't fill the positions.
Correct. Okay. I mean, that would, it wouldn't come out of general fund if there's some, okay. Alright, I just want.
If that would happen, I would bring it back to the board, changing the, uh, the funding.
Okay.
Alright, I will need a motion on this.
Okay, I make a motion that we approve, uh, E1.
Alright, we have a motion on E1.
Second.
Have a second from Terry Wright. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Chair votes aye. H5, Ms. Crawford?
Okay, this is just a, a minor thing that I noticed in the contract. There's a discrepancy in what is being asked for in the letter from Mr. Bowling and what is written in the contract. The letter says they were requesting $20,000 for the entire school year, and then on page two, under, um, I think it's page two, yes, under duties of school, paragraph two, it says agrees to pay $12,000. So we'll need to get that corrected, am I right?
That was the old amount.
Yeah. So the contract that we're going to approve needs to say 20,000.
We just used the old contract.
I know, but it.
Didn't change the amount, yeah.
It is.
You're right.
There is a discrepancy.
Okay, then you wanna make a motion based on what you.
Yes, I wanna make a motion that, uh, to approve, um, is, what is it, H5? H5 with the correction in the contract.
One second.
Have a motion and second, board. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. That moves us down to emergency session. So I declare that we're in an emergency session. First item we have is review of confirmation vote, 2016-2017, final Putnam County School Board budget, uh, at the Board Attorney's recommendation. So Mr. Douglas, I'm gonna turn this over to you.
This is just to reiterate and reaffirm the budget vote that was held a couple of weeks ago, um, because all the board members are here now, we just wanna get it on record of everyone's votes.
Okay, we'll need a motion.
So moved.
Need a second.
Second.
And a second from Ms. Cummings. A motion from Mr. Wright. Any discussion?
Are we gonna do them one at a time, or just?
One at a time.
One at a time, yeah.
Okay, I need to do this all one at a time again?
Sorry.
Okay.
Yes.
Let me see where Pam hit it. It hit it.
I know, it wasn't here.
Well, I'm in the emergency items section.
Just a single sheet.
Single sheet.
Oh, yeah.
I don't have it.
I had it, I printed it.
I think, I think Ms. Crawford took them. I'm messing with you, Jane, I know you didn't take them. She'll turn up in a minute. You'll get it to me, Rhonda.
I'll hand you that and I'll hand it up.
And I'll read through it, and Charlie, if you will do the roll call. Alright.
I'm just curious, we had a forum, but it still has to be done? Does that state?
We, we just wanna reaffirm that there is an official forum.
War body corps is better than something like this on a telephone.
Thank you.
Alright, uh, public hearing to adopt final budget and Tuesday, September 13th, 2016, 5:05 PM. We need motions to roll call vote. Number one, approve final required local effort millage rate of 4.552 mils.
District one.
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
Number two, approve final discretionary millage rate of 0.748 mils.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
No. Yes, sorry.
District five?
Yes.
Approved final capital alley millage rate of 1.50 mils.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
Number four, approve final total millage rate of 6.800 mils, which is 2.1, 2% below the rolled back rate.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
Number five, approve final general fund budget of 89 million, 680,984 dollars and 87 cents.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
No.
District five?
Yes.
Number six, approve final debt service funds budget of 222,667 dollars and 93 cents.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
Number seven, approve final capital projects funds budget of 9 million, 28,979 dollars and eight cents.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
Number eight, approve final special revenue funds budget of 15 million, 429,529 dollars and 81 cents.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
Number nine, approve final internal service funds budget of 25 million, 552,795 dollars and 20 cents.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
Number 10, approve final trust and agency funds budget of 130,000 dollars, 130,000, excuse me, final budget of 130,014 dollars and 33 cents.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
Number 11, approve final enterprise funds budget of 31 million, 76,460 dollars and 86 cents.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
Number 12, approve total district fund budget in its entirety of 171 million, 121,432 dollars and eight cents.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
No.
District five?
Yes.
Number 13, approval of resolution determining revenues and millages levied for 2016-2017.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
Number 14, approval of resolution adopting the district summary budget for 2016-2017.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
Shannon, do y'all need this back, Rhonda? I just go along to it. Okay. It'll become part of this official package here. Okay, having that out of the way, we go to number two, Crescent City High School, request for early release on October 28th, 2016, justification expiration time sensitive.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion from Nikki Cummings, a second from Terry Wright. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Number three, consensus to advertise update to policy number 5350, justification expiration time sensitive.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion from Nikki Cummings and a second from Jane Crawford. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and that will take us out of emergency session and back into, I wanna say, old business.
You're right.
Ms. Chair? I make a motion to remove item L1 from the agenda? Table?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to remove from the table the discussion input and action on edge for Educational Excellence, Inc. Have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
For point of order, since, do we need to do the second one also, or because they're the same thing, or?
It would.
No, they're different.
They're different.
Ones to remove from the table and the others to?
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we approve L2.
Second.
Have a motion and a second.
Oh, wait. Wait, I mean, aren't we gonna hear it?
You haven't, they haven't presented yet.
We've gotta hear it.
They're supposed to present.
I was just curious what the difference was.
I thought they were both, they were gonna present both items.
Discussion input and action, but you don't wanna take action.
The first one's just remove it from the table, and the second one's to.
Right, so now we present. Okay, that's what I was confused about.
And technically, you can have a motion and a second and then discussion.
Yeah.
That's not out of protocol, so.
Alright, so we have a motion and a second to, to.
We didn't have a second.
We had a motion for L2.
Yeah, Terry seconded it.
Terry seconded. All in favor, say aye?
No.
No, now it's discussion. Now it's discussion.
We're gonna discuss the second one.
I thought we already did the first one, but it's okay.
And then we have a motion and second on the table for the second one, and we're gonna do discussion before we roll.
Okay, discussion.
And presentation.
And presentation.
I got you, I was, I'm trapped between you and Ms. Crawford, it's rough sometimes.
It's hard, I know. Poor baby.
You wanna call them up?
Yes, please come up. Ms. Parsons and Ms. Freeman.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Apologize for being in my tennis shoes, but some of us have to work really hard. Um, we do have, um, I'm gonna minimize what you're seeing up there so that you can see part of our plan. Um, we, it has taken us this time to, up until yesterday afternoon, putting more pieces together, and we're gonna show you what that looks like. I'll talk through a little bit while he's getting that set up for us. Um, we did select , um, item A in our choices for us to contract, but we have a combination of things that we're gonna do. We're gonna contract with, uh, Dr. Matthew Olson. He has a proven track record of school improvement and turnaround efforts with, um, to include partnerships with NIFAC, Flagler County, and the Florida Department of Education. Um, he also has been associated with Evan Lefsky. Many of you remember his name from Florida Department of Education. They had, they are also in a partnership together in, uh, in another organization, but we are contracting with him separately on, uh, on this contract. And many of you have read that statute, um, from six, Florida statute 6A and lots of little numbers there, that, um, we will follow that very closely with him as our leader. We'll also coordinate dispersing responsibilities and sharing responsibilities with a, with a position that was approved by our board yesterday as, um, Director of Academic Support, and that we will move one of our, our existing, uh, employees to that position. The position has been advertised as Dean of Curriculum and Instruction since the beginning of the year. We've had a few candidates, but none that have, have fit, um, what we need to lead the turnaround. So what we know is that, um, early on and, and during pre-planning, we went through every single student that we had at the time. We've had some come and go, back and forth through our schools, but we know exactly where they stand in their testing. We know that is the critical element for our school grade, is our student performance. So our categories with, um, three categories in both math and reading should help us because the students not only can, can earn, uh, earn toward the school grade, points towards that school grade for, uh, levels three and up, but also growth. And then the third category in the math and reading is for our bottom quartile to move. So those, those six are very important, but some additional categories that we have, of course, with our biology for science, um, and even though we, we have, um, science scores for those students, those students are, are different than students that we've had before in that position, so, but we're still looking for that growth in, in that number, regardless of it being different students. Um, also for our US history, um, one of the questions that, I'm not sure if you were copied on an email I received from Heather Harrell from DOE today, that was, that they're, they're closing out the Financial Corrective Action Plan. One of the things that they were asking for was, um, our, our student count. And in our minutes, we had talked about 120 students being our, um, our goal and what our budget was based on. And then currently, Rhonda confirmed to them that we had 117 at that time. Um, but what we do not have is an additional staff member, and we're contracting out with Florida Virtual School, our, our history courses, US history, um, which is our most important for our school grade, um, world history, and then our government and economics. We hope to hire for second semester, but right now we're contracting for that, and that will save us a little bit in our budget. So that will give us, um, some flexibility in meeting the budget that, that we've projected, um, and then we've also plugged in some cushion there as well. Alright, so it looks like he's got me set here.
Lisa, is the person you were looking to hire here?
Dr. Matthew Olson?
Yes. No, no, I'm sorry. Is he from Putnam County, or is he, I mean, I guess I'm just a little?
No, so there's two different people, okay? So Dr. Matthew Olson, who, who has contracted and worked through NIFAC for turnaround schools, Flagler County and Florida Department of Education, he will be the lead. We are contracting with him for direct services. He will direct, directly serve me as a leader and Ms. Erntz, who, who will be working together in a leadership role.
Okay.
She will continue to lead our health sciences programs, and we will, we will do some contracting to fulfill, kinda overlap her responsibilities, so that it frees her up to do more focus in those areas that we need her to. Um, and, and your other question was, so, so we have one from without and one from within, is, is basically what's happening.
I guess, I just, I guess, according to the statute, it says they have to be a state-approved provider of SES or supplemental education services.
Right, Dr..
Dr. Olson.
Yes, he is, he is leading it, but we felt like we needed more support on a daily basis, rather than just a contract. And many of you, and at your contract, at your schools that are in corrective action, your DOE people are not there constantly. You have certain people that are assigned, they're local all, all the time, and other people that come in for support. So that's a little bit similar to the, to the plan that we're.
People that he's hired to come in for support, he's not gonna be there every day. You said, the article stated, once a week, maybe?
He, he will be, at, at minimum, once a week.
Okay.
So, but, but then there are other times like testing windows and things like that, where, where we need him more, more numbers of times, certain weeks, and we don't need him on weeks when we have, you know, several days worth of testing.
Has he, um, in his qualifications, has he worked with other charter schools in this capacity?
I don't, I don't know the answer on charter schools, but through NIFAC and Flagler County, he has worked extensively on school improvement and turnaround.
I just, I don't know how you, like, get a stamp of approval, certified state SES provider, and I mean, you're, you're sure he's one of those, I mean, but he didn't have a company name, it's not like.
Well, they did offer for us to go through the company that he is also associated with, and, give me a second, I'll, I'll look that up.
Because I remember, like, SES tutors, when Title I had them, and they were, they're specific people, and you had to work under ABC tutoring, or this, or that, to be an SES, um, you know, so I guess that's my only question, is state-approved provider, um, of that.
So is your question, is he state-approved, or how his organization is structured?
My, my question is, is he have an organization that's gonna be?
That's state-approved. Yeah, well, he could be, he could be a fictitious business, a fictitious name.
Certainly.
And he could be a 1099 guy, so there's really, from a structural standpoint of his business.
He'd have to have a company.
He doesn't have to have a company.
What that does for us being able to.
State approval goes, I don't, I'm included in that.
Right, for us to be able to contract with him directly, rather than through, um, PCG. PCG, I think y'all know it as PCG. Y'all have done business with them before as well. Um, PCG US, Public Consulting Group, so they have different, um, Charlie, you could probably define it a little bit better than I can. So in the Public Consulting Group, they have education and law, and, um, they have lots of different categories, and they are, they have operated, and he does, in association with Evan Lefsky, through, um, PCG, and it costs us less money to contract with him directly, as opposed to through the agency.
So he's just doing a fictitious thing? Yeah, that's, yeah, I get it.
So Lisa, when he steps on your campus each week, what is he going to be doing?
So, so he is the expert on turnaround. So what we know, our critical elements are identifying the data, what are we doing to monitor progress, monitor, and what are we doing to support our teachers in best practices and make sure that they have the tools that they need to implement that. So he's gonna lead that, and then, and then Ms. Erntz will also assist in different pieces to, to, um, implement it as he tells us what we need to do. Just like when you guys have the DOE come into, to your schools, and they will say, okay, we're, we're spending time in different classrooms, they show you what they, what they love, that's going great, they show you what they wanna see that, that needs to be addressed differently, and then the principal then is responsible. The problem is, as, as principal or director there, I, I can't do all the jobs, and, and, and you know what a load it is to wear so many hats, and, and yet we feel like it's a, a best plan to share the responsibilities rather than me simply lead that.
Board, any more questions? Mr. Douglas?
Because there is an existing corrective action plan for the deteriorating financial condition, do you know the cost of Mr. Olson, and what that will do to your budget?
Absolutely. I mentioned a while ago that one of the pieces of our budget that we, that we felt like we were flexing by not having a full-time history teacher that is giving us a position, and we were not at a break-even. If they'll let me log on right there, I'll pull up the budget that was just approved, if you'd like to see all that, or I can email it to you for you to look at. But we do feel like we're in a very healthy situation. Disposal of that college road property and $6,000, over $6,000 a month has truly helped us get on the right path. But as far as our finances, we are in a healthy position. We are making payments on time, and we are up to date with all of our bills, and we are in a healthy position.
Does Dr. Olson get evaluated by anybody?
I don't know the answer to that. I think the ultimate evaluation will be whether we grow or not, but we, I'm not comfortable with waiting till test time, and then getting that back to find out whether we grow or not, and that mean, you know, whether we are open or closed. But what I know is we have over 100 families of students that thrive in a small environment, and I'm willing to hang in here and do what it takes to make sure they have that as an option.
And how many, what is enrollment?
Enrollment right now, 117.
Full-time?
Yep. You are used to us having several part-time students, but this year with us being grades nine through 12 all the way, and we have had several younger students that have approached us, and we really evaluate that on an individual basis. Are they ready? We did have a student our first year who was extremely ready, extremely advanced, and she will graduate at just barely 16 years old, this year. Phenomenal young lady. Many of you know her and know her families, but anyway, we do not have any other part-time students right now, but we have done that in order to meet the needs of the students.
Lisa, for me, I mean, we've kinda rocked through this deteriorating financial condition, and you're getting back on a good footing, or you seem to be coming into a good footing. And I think the board has really worked very hard. My only concern that I have at this time is that if we have teachers that are teaching out of field, that you let the parents know, and you've probably already done that, but the parents need to know, because I don't want a child coming up to be passed to another grade and them be punished because they didn't have the right standard.
Agreed. And one of, our only class in the entire school that is being taught by a teacher out of field at this time is environmental science, and that was his background in the public sector. He is certified technology and runs all of our other courses with our Career Tech program with Microsoft, and is certified in those areas. But his environmental science classes, he is not certified, and that does not require an end-of-course exam, which gives some relief, I would think, to all.
But in the public school system, it still requires a letter...
Absolutely. Yes, agreed.
Ms. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Attorney Charlie, does this all meet muster, right, from a legal standpoint?
Yes. I have not seen anything that says Mr. Olson is approved as a supplemental education services provider or education management organization, but assuming that there is documentation that exists, we'll communicate with Adam Emerson and say, this was Edge's decision to go with option one. And it's really in DOE's hands, whether they approve or disapprove, and for charter schools specifically, the rule takes it out of the district's hands to approve or disapprove of this plan. So really, the format is just allow Edge to present which of the four options they choose. They've chosen an option, and we will confirm that Mr. Olson meets one of those two elements, and hand that over to Mr. Emerson at Department of Education.
Yeah, just to be clear for everybody, it's not our job to choose that for them.
Correct.
Because there might be some watching, or reading, or whatever, thinking that somehow the board has some sway in that. This is really, we're just saying, hey, this is your option, and that's good. So, okay, all right, just want everybody to be clear on that.
And one quick clarification, is it, because I did notice in the statute, it either says, A, you may select a state-approved provider of SES services, Supplemental Education Services, or you may select an education management organization, or academic management organization.
We researched those extensively. The educational management organizations were extremely expensive, for one, and very unavailable. We were very surprised, and I think it's because of our rural area, that they weren't particularly willing to send somebody to us.
Okay. So he's a supplemental edu, that's what he's considered, supplemental education services.
That's his area of expertise, and having...
That's what we'll have Dr. Adam Emerson confirm. I mean, does he have to submit some kind of resume to Adam Emerson, or Ms. Muir? It's crazy. Oh, sorry. I'm just sorry, the whole process is...
That's okay. I had the opportunity to speak with Adam.
Come on, come on.
Yeah.
And right before the meeting, because I did not know anything about Dr. Olson, and so he said, yes, he had, actually has been a proven charter school person, who he felt very comfortable with. But actually, what we have to know is that he is not an SES provider, okay, and nor is he an entity, but Adam said that was not an issue, because they had used him to support charter school improvement, and he felt confident that he would be a person who would provide the guidance that was needed.
This is curiosity. So he's not a, he's not registered with SunBiz as a fictitious name, or...
He is, he is a member.
I'm with you, I'm gonna vote for this, but I'm just curious.
Well, actually, he was a member of the other organization, and I forget those letters, yeah. And, but he is also working as a private individual.
So he can just 1099, right? Okay, all right, right, Charlie, he can just 1099. If he's not a fictitious name at SunBiz, he can, he can just be 1099, right?
Yes, as long as the Department of Education is satisfied that he meets the qualification as prescribed in the rule.
That's great, that's just not a good way to do business, but that's just my two cents for what it's worth.
I wish that he would just put it, you know, Mr. Emerson, put it in writing.
I actually could call, I mean, I speak with him a lot.
Your lawyer isn't here smarter than me.
So I can ask him just to make a statement.
Yeah, I got you.
But he did say...
If he said that, I mean, that's all I was worried about, so. Okay, thank you.
I will send an email to copy all of you on that, as well, as your leaders, and show the plan to them as well, what we have here, as far as, he will actually create the rest of the plan with us. So we use the SIMS program, just like all of your schools do, to work through our school improvement plan. He will work on that with us, on what we implement. And I will make, send that to Mr. Emerson and Heather Harrell as well, to copy all of you, so that everyone's in the loop with exactly what the plan is, and how that needs to be presented. So I'd actually emailed a couple of times requesting other plans that have been approved, and I've not received one back. I'm very surprised that, you know, I would like, while we can read the statute and walk down step by step to verify, I really wanted to see other plans, and maybe brainstorm and get some ideas with people of things that have really worked for them.
I think, and this is just me, that I think it's in our court, and they wanna see what decisions we make, whether we approve or disapprove, and they're reluctant to give decisions of that type, you know, because they know it's gonna go through appeals process, and it's a long process, but I could be wrong.
Does he have a yearly contract?
Contract for the year, yes.
Okay, so it's annual, it begins October 15 till, I mean, you, I'm just curious if it's automatically a year, or do you wait till the grades come out, or?
No, no, he will work us through this year, this school year. And then in the spring, you know how it gets to May, and then May is packed full of testing. So we're hoping that by April, we are well through the things that we need to do with him. I mean, we still have instruction, obviously, going on when we can, but it is absolutely packed full of testing.
Pat, is there anything you'd like to say about the plan?
Well, I'm excited about the plan, because it has taken us some time, as Mr. Buckles pointed out, trying to find someone that would serve us in this region. That's what took us so long, and I appreciate Mr. Buckles approving the delay till today in presenting the plan, because we would think we were getting really close with someone, and then have that kinda fall apart. And so finding Mr. Olson has been, and I think the day-to-day follow-up and work with Ms. Errentz as our Director of Academic Affairs will end up really supplementing that, rather than just him coming in once a week. We know that there's a lot of work that he will do outside of that, certainly with the data, but I think this is gonna end up being a very good plan for us.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Tucker, say, "Board, we have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All in favor say aye."
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
If you would, let me make just another comment about our four-day week. I will tell you that we have had an awful lot of students stay by choice. They show up on Monday, and they want additional support, and then we have a few of our teachers who say, you will stay, you will be here, and they do show up, and some don't. So we've had some consequence with that, as far as the opportunities for additional support, and kids that choose to walk away, and how do we make that happen? How do we draw them back in? And that constant parent contact has made a big difference, and then our teachers are there. Every Tuesday and Thursday is specifically designated for additional support with the students, but Mr. Olson has also agreed to Skype or FaceTime with us for some additional meetings, like on Wednesday afternoons, when he can't spend an entire day there, but my staff's still there an hour to be able to work with him.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Board.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay.
Have a motion and a second.
We have a motion.
We already voted on that.
M1, new business. Discussion input and approval of a Putnam Academy Arts and Sciences School Improvement Plan.
It looks great. It's very, very...
As always.
Yeah, it looks great.
All right, I have a motion from Terry Wright, and a second from Jane Crawford. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Charter school student conduct, code of conduct, student handbook, and parent contracts. Anybody here to make a presentation on that?
Are we voting on this?
Doesn't say we are.
We don't vote on this.
Aye.
So.
What do we need?
Next?
All right.
You should, we should, that's a clear poll error, we should have put that for both. We need to approve that.
So moved.
Have a motion from Ms. Jorgens.
Second.
Second from Terry Wright. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Discussion input and approval to set the date and time for Putnam County School Reorg...
You missed three.
I missed three, I was just testing you guys.
You're in a hurry.
Discussion input and approval.
He always needs to get us out of here.
Input and approval for, a request for a proposal for real estate broker service. Anyone want to discuss?
Wow, is all I got to say about that RFP.
What you talked him into doing here.
Well, are we...
I had to fill this thing out, I'd say for you.
What are we discussing?
Ms. Granton has worked very hard on this.
Yeah.
This thing is unbelievable.
Put out an RFP to advertise nationally for the Campbell Building.
Okay, who's, but for real estate broker service, who's providing the broker service?
We're putting a bid out.
Oh, we're putting RFP for broker service, okay.
Ms. Granton, could I ask you a couple of questions? Just 'cause you worked so hard on this, is this something that you just, I know you didn't describe it, I mean, did you kinda model it up to other counties, or call?
Yes, I pulled up several different counties, and we kinda brought it down to fit Putnam County. It was like 35 pages with some other counties, and we didn't need that in-depth information.
And did we do any, decide on any preference for Putnam County real estate agents, or not?
First, it is scored in there, but no, not originally.
Okay. So anybody, anybody from Oregon to California, New York, kind of what?
Well, basically, we'll look at their presentation.
Okay.
And then score it from there.
Okay, I was just curious.
And I, I... We try to meet the best for our county.
Yeah, absolutely.
Board, I obviously won't be around when all this takes place. I would simply say, one of the considerations I hope that you'll think about is the timing in which you want the property to move. If there isn't a timeframe, then I think a lot of your options remain open for local consideration and other issues. If there is a timeframe, then I think you have to look to those who have a track record of moving these things beyond our economic circle, because our economic circle here, there's not people lining up to buy it, the best I can figure, all right? So I would simply say, think about that, because if there is a timeframe involved, then maybe you would wanna think in those ways. If there's not, then maybe you think another, but that's just my two cents.
Thank you.
Sandy, I...
Worth what you paid for.
What, by what date do they have to be in?
We haven't established the date, because you haven't approved it, so I can't insert a date. And I also wanted to mention however long we advertise it, leave it open. I was anticipating 21 days, because we are asking for a lot of information back from them. And I feel like it should be advertised, it should be advertised on the web, and it should honestly go out further.
How would we do that?
Does this go in newspapers, local newspapers?
We can place it in local newspapers, we can do the Florida Administrative Weekly, we can get it out there.
So if we decide today, you'll put it, kinda publicize it tomorrow? Is that your department?
I will set up the date, we will advertise it, we will get it out there.
And is there anything you feel that should be made to make it less intense, or no?
No, I took a lot of the material and kinda tweaked it.
Yeah, you did a great job. I thought you were looking at 35-page ones, and narrowed it down to 11.
Now, it does state in here that it's a three-year term contract. That's the standard language for my contracts. That doesn't mean you have to do that. But I can put it on the street just as soon as I'm given directions.
And it doesn't say, I know it says the scope of services and experience and qualifications, but it does not say anything whether or not they have to be commercial, or...
This is...
Personal real estate.
It doesn't say that.
Okay.
I don't believe it does. You know, there's a lot of information in there, and it was put together very quickly.
Yes.
To meet the agenda.
Instead of the phrase for three years, if it could be for the specific sale of the Campbell Building.
And see, you can negotiate that. That can be part of the final contract.
Yeah, until property is sold, or...
Until the Campbell Building is sold.
And you have a right, if you're not satisfied, you have a 30-day right to cancel with that person, too.
Because if it's been a year, and we've not shown it two times, we're not gonna keep them.
No.
So, I mean...
I would, I would like to change that.
Mm-hmm.
From three years to, for the specific sale of the Campbell Building.
And then we give them a certain amount of time?
You'd have to give them a period, right, Mr. Douglas, or...
You could limit it for the sole purpose of the...
Sale of one piece of property?
Yeah.
Okay. But there, again, if you're not satisfied, you can cancel the service.
Okay, so if they haven't sold it within a certain amount of time?
And they, you have to, we'll have to choose a committee to go through this, and this is the first time Putnam County has ever put an RFP.
Yeah, that's why I was a little concerned.
For brokerage.
We, you would pick a committee, or is it the board gonna interview, like we've done with the board attorney and our insurance?
I think we should be involved in this.
Yeah.
So that the committee doesn't interview a bunch of people, and then the board says, well, we're gonna redo what the committee just did.
Sure would be nice to get it through easily. Probably someone from the community, for sure, would have to be involved. The board, I don't have a committee, this is first-time experience for me.
Well, then, Mr. Douglas, get with you and work with us.
Yes, we would definitely, and I do have a scoring system that has been tried and true from other counties, so...
Yeah, that's very good. I like that. I like the percentage, I think that's right.
I do, too.
Right. So I feel like, as long as we put this out on the street quickly, get it out there, give them time to get the material back to us, and a decision does not have to be made at a specific time. If it takes us longer to evaluate, then that's fine.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you for all your hard work, I appreciate it.
That was a lot of work.
Thank you very much.
Did we have a motion and a second?
I'll make a motion, oh, well, with...
Yes.
Go ahead, because we might change.
I want to need a motion, Ms. Cummings, are you making a motion?
Let know if Kathy had anything.
Uh-uh. I'll make a motion that we approve the request for proposal with the change, taking out the three-year term.
And inserting to the sale of the property or just?
I think we can just take out the three-year term.
Okay. All right, I second.
Where, we're just, do you know what page that's on?
It's on page two. I'm just going to take the box out.
That's the motion, right here.
Oh.
Here, we have a motion and a second. Any more discussion?
Terry.
Terry Wright.
My second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Thank you. Okay, discussion input and approvals to set date and time for Putnam County School Board Reorganizational Meeting.
What was?
November.
No, yeah, what was the date?
Yeah, we were changing it to...
You have already had two regular meetings set, one for November, I put the dial on in there for you, but November, um...
First.
First. First, a regular meeting, and then November fifteenth, a regular meeting.
We don't want to change.
You have to reorganize by statute on the twenty-second. That's the law, you know, because it's an election year.
Did you say the sixteenth?
Fifteenth.
Fifteenth.
I'd like to make a motion that we change the meeting on November fifteenth to the twenty-second at ten-thirty.
Yeah, I think that'll do it.
You can reorganize first and then do your regular business. Your new member will be in and you can do your regular business if that's what you want.
After the swearing-in, right, the swearing-in.
What date will the next scheduled meeting be in December? Yep?
Whatever the first two seems.
The sixth.
The sixth, December sixth.
That's two weeks later.
And that's right when we go to, no, we get back by then.
We're back by then, yeah, it's in between.
Yeah.
That's the week before.
Motion on the floor.
Have a motion on the floor from Ms. Jorgensen for November twenty-second, reorganizational meeting time and date. At what time?
Ten-thirty.
Ten-thirty.
A second?
Second from Ms. Crawford. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair, I'll be abstaining from this vote.
Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. All right, consensus to advertise new school board, new Putnam County School District Police Department Policy, uh, number PD four-five-nine-one.
Advertise.
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 Advertise. Okay. All right, moving on to board member reports. I'd like to start today as, I normally don't start and I usually wind up, but I would like to follow up on some items that, or an item in particular that we had discussed at the last meeting. And it had to do with the future of tech ed in Putnam County. And I, I mentioned that I felt like we needed to hold a workshop at some point. And what I would like to do is request that we hold a workshop on December sixth to discuss options for the future of what the board, a majority of this board would consider as an appropriate direction to continue or to change and decide on, you know, at that time. And I would probably think that we need to invite other entities to do this meeting and to be able to answer questions. I think that would give us time for the organizations to, that are interested and for us to get our ducks in a row if we're interested in what to do. So it's not a big, uh, up in the air item and, uh, and because there's no need worrying with this if the majority of the board is not interested in...
Who are you going to invite?
I thought, well, I thought I'd invite, we have with us very kindly today, we have Melissa Miller and I'm trying to remember your name.
Dr. Anna Leibish.
Leibish, Leibish. She's here today from, I would like to invite them and whoever else they need to bring. I would like to invite anyone from the St. John's County School District that is interested to come. If they're, you know, why, you know, why do they want us and what's the deal? And, uh, you know, I know that it kind of turned into a, you know, kind of a strange meeting the last time, but I think it's, I think we're calmer, heads need to prevail and let's look at what's best for the future of our county and our students and, uh, in the long run. And, uh, and if that's staying with St. John's County and the majority of the board wants to do this or do that, that's fine. If that means us doing it ourselves, let's do it, that's fine. Or if that means dealing with St. John River State College who is right here in Palaka, certainly would welcome that as well. So if, December sixth, do you think that's enough time to, for everybody to get their information together, Pam? Or do you think we need to go on up to the next meeting in December?
It's almost two months.
That's, that's, that's fine. Okay. So December sixth at two o'clock?
I think one o'clock.
One o'clock.
One o'clock. This will probably last a little longer, yes. I'd like to thank Melissa and Dr. Leibish for coming today. It's always a pleasure to see you guys. And look forward to, look forward to seeing what our options are and how we can benefit our children. And with that, I've got two more things I'd like to mention. I'd like to mention the hurricane that is building. And I spoke to the superintendent. She's already been to the Emergency Operations Center and she will be giving updates online and keeping us abreast. We haven't had a major storm in some years, but I know that some of us have spent night after night in shelters not knowing if our families are safe. So, and they were full. I mean, we don't know what our posture will be, but I trust the superintendent will keep the board updated on that as rapidly as you can. Okay? And my last comment has to do with what I read in the Palaka paper the other day about, uh, the mayor, Terrell Hill slamming, uh, the foundation. I was really disappointed when I saw that. I, I understand the frustration with people saying we have so many poor people in Putnam County. Folks, we do. It's the poverty. It is, it is, we are, we have the worst health statistics in poverty rates. Is that an excuse? No, all kids can learn, but it is a fact that you have to go through and deal with that. I know it frustrates the mayor to hear people say that, but we are designated Florida Greenway. And all you got to do is look at the map. I came in on the Clay County line a day or two ago and it says, "Welcome to outdoor-friendly Putnam County." It's got fishing and hiking and hunting on the sign and boating and camping and the whole nine yards. We're, we're the park. We're not where the interstate connectors are going through. The next one probably, there'll probably be twenty years before there'll be one after the one they put up, the Shands Bridge is going to cross up there. We're going, we have a hard time dealing with some of these items and saying that the board was not a proper composition was totally erroneous. And I think he misspoke and I, I think the world of Terrell. He's, but I think he just caught him at a bad time. You know, we all have bad days and it's just, this is so critical. Cynthia Asia and I tried so hard to get, years ago, to, to take control of the Redlands Christian migrant, the, uh, the money and serve the pre-K kids in Putnam County so there would be a no-break-in continuity of service and we'd be on the same page as kids progressed. And if you can't get them to school at pre-K, you're not going to be able to serve them. And we've got to find a way to do that in this county. It's imperative and I, I hope the county leaders understand it's not out of a, just we're looking for something to do. We woke up one morning and decided we're going to go out and try to do some new things, but it's, it is a fact that our children, they come to us and they, if they have parents that, the ones that have parents that can take them to get dental health and medical health and stuff, and ones that don't, they have two things. They have all kind of other related illnesses and things that impede their instructional process. And it's important to get them to school so we can get them the help they need. So I took, I was disappointed, I won't say I took exception. I was disappointed with the mayor's comments and I think that he is, he is as big a supporter of helping children as, as anyone I've ever seen because I watched him grow and go through the community and he's a fine man, but he evidently had a bad day that day and was not happy with what he heard. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Wright.
Oh, no report. Happy as a clam. All is well. Enjoying high school football again. Little bummed that probably Friday won't happen, but, um...
Me too, Terry.
You know, a little bummed at that, but hey, you know, my son's the kicker, so any tailwind helps. So, so I'm just saying, you know, don't cancel the game because of a hurricane, right? A little tailwind is a good thing, so, uh...
One half, though.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, really.
All is well. Thank you.
Ms. Cummings?
Um, I did want to comment. A lot of people are asking about best and brightest criteria. And if you look at the last agenda, September twentieth, under O2, there is the PDF that the superintendent provided us. So all those people wondering if they made the cut or not. And of course, you can call HR, but a lot of people keep calling. They're like, "I don't know the scores. You got to look online." And it's a great thing for teachers, although nobody seems to be in agreement with the money as far as how it's awarded, but at least we will have that done through the state. Lift Putnam is very exciting because they were able to not only secure a matching grant through CFEF, but also add a, another pre-K four class in Middleton Bernie. And that's my district. I fought really hard four years ago to get another pre-K four, uh, class down there because there's such a need. When you have two pre-K classes and you have ten kindergarten classes, it's not hard to realize, wait a minute, where's those, where are those kids coming from? What are they doing in pre-K? And South Putnam is trying to get more, you know, daycare pre-K four programs, but, so now I think they're up to four classes because I really fought to get one added. And then Lift Putnam just got another one and is paying for the teacher and the aide. And I'm just so excited because it's giving those kids a head start. I have been passionate since I've been on the board about that, talking to Van Zant and everybody else in Tallahassee that would listen because it's like, why are you funding this half a day? These kids need the full day. It's time they need to come to school and get acclimated and they're going to be behind the eight ball if they don't have that extra year. So I really appreciate Lift Putnam working so hard and Mr. Pageant doing all that because that was a huge undertaking and to get the matching grant was huge. And along with that, not that our county, um, the Health Department, October is called World Food Day. So we are not only, some schools are participating, civic groups. So the whole process of making the education and the poverty and everything coming together, let me tell you, if you don't think that there's hungry kids in this county and there's kids that are not getting meals on their table, then you're wrong because it's, it happens all the time. So this World Food Day is through the Health Department and I may be, you know, we're trying to get more and more school involvement because the food all goes to our Feed the Need program, which is amazing. So our numbers actually in South Putnam are up to a hundred and sixty-two kids at Middleton Bernie get snack packs or backpack food on the weekend because they, they've been identified. And that is unbelievable. It's huge. And so I just, I, uh, I can't express enough how, how much is a need and I appreciate all the involvement with the community because, but World Food Day, October, we'll work together and working on different Kiwanis and rotaries. Everybody's been supportive, especially yours. Thank you. That's all.
Ms. Crawford?
Just while we've been in here, I've received four texts from parents wanting to know about school on Thursday and Friday. So when I leave here, I will be sure to let them know what you've, what you've told us. Along with what Nikki's talking about backpack program, we just installed our new president, Cory Booth, at Kiwanis of the Isaiah City, and he has chosen his project for the year to support the backpack program. So we'll be working very hard with Denise Bramlett, who is one of our members and one of the biggest supporters of the program to, um, to support them. And just very briefly, I've popped my head in several classrooms around the county and some really wonderful things are going on with our kids in Putnam County and we should be very proud of our teachers.
Thank you, Ms. Jorgensen.
Um, first of all, everybody needs to be praying for the victims of this hurricane already. There have been many in addition to taking our own precautions and making our own plans. We expelled a fourth-grade eleven-year-old today. Yeah, I know. And I'm just going to throw out to the board that we have a middle school and a high school, um, solution center. And I really think, I know we have no money, but we have money. It's just where do we put it? And I really think we need to think about starting something for our elementary schools. Because I've heard for twenty-something years, we can tell by third grade which ones are going to be a problem, which students are going to drop out. So let's take those kids and get them some help instead of just pointing them out and saying, "These are the ones." I would just like to throw it out there and have you think about it. It broke my heart. And it was mandated, but it was, it broke my heart. Yeah. We do, we need to gather some statistics about how many elementary school children through the years we've had to expel. Wow, this is the first one I've ever seen.
Well, I mean, we've got...
It's not common.
I would, I would like to ask the principals if they think there's a need for an alternate school for elementary students or an alternate classroom or whatever. We couldn't have one for just one kid. No, of course not, but I don't think there's just one kid. I think there are many students, unfortunately, in our elementary schools that need some kind of intervention, perhaps off-site. Teachers have so much going on that I don't know how they can deal with some of the problems that these poor kids bring to school with them. But anyway, I just wanted to mention that because it is heartbreaking and I think, again, the poverty, the statistics here, the number of students we have who don't have an adult in their life that values education. We are merely a babysitting service for them. That's all it is. And many of these kids have never seen or read a book until they get to us in kindergarten. The pre-K program is fabulous. It's, it'll help our teachers and our students, but we can't reach them all. And the ones that filter through and get into the higher grades in elementary, I just think we need to think about something for them. Kathy, you know, you said the parents that don't value education and I'm not really sure that that's it. I'm not sure they know how to value education. Well, it's, it's not just the parents. These kids have no adult in their life that values, there's nobody.
Well, look at the lady that was charged the other day when a child walked off. I mean, come on, they're parents. Some people just don't know how to be parents.
Well, and we have a big problem with addiction in this county also, in this country, never mind the county. But the addiction goes with the poverty and when adults are addicted, they're not taking care of their children. Right. That's the last thing we want. That's the bottom line. And then we get the kids and we have to, we don't have to, but we send them home with food and we get the mental, medical and dental service, do things that the parents should be doing at home.
Pre-K comes in.
And that's where pre-K does come in, yes. But I'd also like, I'm sorry.
And I was just going to say, evidence by the news and newspapers who show pictures of parents who are sitting in a car or laying on the floor of a, of a store and the child standing there crying. How many times have you seen that in the news, on Facebook?
Every day.
It's happening all across the country.
It is.
And it is an issue here in Putnam County.
It is. Okay, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Attorney?
Everything is going well in the legal department?
Oh, you've got that down pretty good.
Okay, my turn. Thank you. Yay, I get to talk. I love it. Okay. Let me, let me just say that this month, if you look at the month of October, it is everything month.
It is.
And it certainly, certainly is Bullying Prevention Month and Monday was World Day of Bullying Prevention. And we wore our blue and we took a picture and you can see that on our website. see that on our website. DOE encouraged it and, uh, sent us information, so we did as they asked to draw attention to it. It is also Domestic Violence Prevention Month, and so at some point, um, in this month, you will see, if we can make it work, the lights at the front of the building will be purple. And, uh, they've asked us, Lee Conley House and, uh, the state organization has asked that the city, the county, and agencies in the county participate by, uh, using the color purple, so we participated last year and plan to do so again this year, so...
When, when is that, that the purple lights will go?
Um, they are supposed to send us the dates, that they want to do that. They'll do that nationwide, actually, and so as soon as I know what those dates are, I'll send it along to you, but I just wanted you to be aware that we'll be doing that, um, certainly this month, again this year. Uh, it's, um, I think that Putnam County used to be at the top of the list, and I think we've dropped several spots, which means we've had some improvement in divest- domestic violence in Putnam County, and we continue to work with all the local agencies to do what we can, uh, in the schools by, um, pursuing the bullying prevention and making students aware, and hopefully they take that message home. Um, I did spend some time with our Director of School Safety and Security, Travis Weaver, at the EOC, or in other words, the Emergency Operations Center, with the Chief, Quinn Romey, today. Um, we listened to a, the state EOC phone conference, um, at eleven-fifteen, and listened to discussion from other counties, and what they determined at this moment, uh, in, in mostly in north-central Florida and, and northeast Florida, um, there's nothing to do at the moment, and there's no decision to make, other than the governor, who also spoke, uh, to us at that time, said that certainly preparedness is, um, the best thing we can do right now, and he would like everybody to be prepared. And you can go to the Emergency Operations Center website through Putnam County, and you can find, uh, all, a, a whole description of everything that you can do to be prepared. And certainly, um, what people need to understand, we, the school district, do not open shelters. Our schools happen to be the shelters, and they are designated and approved by the Red Cross. Those would be the shelters that would be opened if it is deemed necessary by our Emergency Operations Center and, and Chief Quinn Romey. So we will be working with them, meeting with them every day this week to get updates from the state and, and the, uh, national, um, weather, depending on what happens. I mean, there's no way to predict it at this time. So we did a, uh, video. People seemed to like the last one we did, so we did a video that we put on our YouTube, our Facebook, our website, so that, uh, parents can get updated every day by going and, and seeing the video. Today, Terry Suggs, who is the, um, city manager for the city of Palatka, uh, was there with myself and Chief Romey and, uh, Travis, and, uh, we had a brief discussion and just updated everybody so that they can easily go on and see that, whether it's on their phone or at home or wherever, at work. Uh, we'll do that again tomorrow. Um, at this time, the phone conference is again planned for, um, eleven-fifteen, and we don't expect a lot of change. It was over Haiti when we talked today. It will move across Haiti and move towards the Bahamas. What we're expecting is that at eight o'clock on Thursday morning, it will probably be off the coast of Miami. How far off the coast is what we're all waiting to see. And then the path that it takes as it moves up Florida, um, we're still waiting to see. The winds, um, they're expecting Thursday morning to be anywhere from a hundred and thirty to a hundred and fifty miles an hour, and again, depending on how close it is to Florida, that will really determine over the next couple of days what the counties do. If you get wind consistent speed of forty miles an hour into your county, um, it's very hard to run buses, and you probably would not want to at that point. So that will be a determining factor for us if it stays away, but it still gives us winds that are sustained at thirty miles to forty miles an hour, we probably would want to cancel school on Friday. But if it moves further out to sea and it really does not affect us, um, then certainly we would want to have school, uh, as long as it is not detrimental to students in any way. Uh, parents at any time have the right to do whatever with their children they want to do. If they feel better about keeping them home on Friday, even if we have school, that totally is up to the parent. Um, the other thing that, that, um, schools, employees and children need to know, if we close school, last time it was a freebie because we had that time built in. This time, if we have to close school for a day, we will have to make it up, and according to the state, you have to make it up in the semester where you miss it. So we would have to determine, uh, with the union if we could use a planning day or if we'd use a day at Thanksgiving or a day at Christmas if we have to make it up. Now, however, call your state representative and tell them to call the governor because the governor actually, I think, can give us a, a pass if that happens, but we'll have to wait and see what happens to school districts across the state before that's determined. So, um, a lot to kind of wait and see. Um, that's not a comfortable position to be in, but we certainly want people to be prepared. We want them to realize that going to a shelter is a last resort. Okay? That's, that's what the EOC tells us. It is a last resort. We would prefer that people that can get to family or friends and shelter there, that certainly that's a better situation for them. Our schools are just that. They are schools, and we open them as shelters because they are Red Cross-approved, and the Red Cross is there to help us, but there will be a list of things they will need to bring to make them comfortable if we have to open shelters. Um, I will remind people that Kelly Smith Elementary is the special needs shelter. If you or a family member has special needs, that would be the shelter you would go to. If you have pets and you must bring them, Aquila Elementary is the pet shelter, and that is where you and your pets could go. Again, we have not opened shelters, and the school district does not open shelters. That's not our decision. The Emergency Operations Center and Quinn Romey, who is the chief, will make that decision based on the information he has given from the state EOC. So we'll just monitor this, and more than likely, a decision about Friday school will be made Thursday morning, but not until Thursday morning. I have for you, from the EOC today, uh, information, a guide on hazardous information that you might need to have. Anybody can pick 'em up. They're free out there.
And I wanted to say thank you for the IT department. Because of last time, we had such a great, um, quick response, and I appreciate all that that's being done to make sure that those notices get out with our automated calls. Thank you. They don't get it just a call, they get a text, an email, so there's like, okay, there's no, even if your phone's dead, you can get the, you know, the email, so thank you for doing it.
Communication is very important, and so we want to make sure that we communicate as quickly as possible and in the best manner for our parents and our community, and I was very fortunate to have, um, Terry Suggs and, and Chief Romey with us today as we did our very brief video. Um, and certainly I've offered to the city and the county, if they have something that they want to say to students and parents or to the community, um, we certainly have a wonderful team, and we will send them, uh, to the city or the county so that they can make their statement, and we'll get that out as well, uh, if they'd like to do that. So unless you have any other questions for me, that's really all I have today.
Board members, if you have nothing else, I hereby conclude the meeting.